Lako.
Please, please sit. The sitting is open. The court meets this afternoon to hear the second round of oral observations of Myanmar on the request for the indication of provisional measures by the Gambia. I shall now give the floor to Mr. Staker. You have the floor.
Mr. President, members of the court, I will respond to the points made by counsel for the Gambia this morning in relation to issues of prima facie jurisdiction and prima facie standing and the form of the provisional measures requested. The first sub-issue of prima facie jurisdiction relates to the matter of the Gambia acting in these proceedings as a proxy or organ of an international organization rather than in its capacity as a state party to the Genocide Convention. We made the point during the first round that these proceedings are brought on behalf of and are funded by the OIC. One thing we do find striking is that in its second round this morning, the Gambia said nothing about funding. Yesterday, I said that it is unknown which states have donated what to the voluntary fund or whether the donors are even confined to states. This morning might have been an opportunity for the Gambia to provide some transparency in that respect, but there was complete silence. Not only do we still not know precise amounts contributed by individual donors, we do not even know if the donors include non-state entities such as international organizations, NGOs, or even private individuals. We do not even know if the Gambia is spending a single penny of its own resources on these proceedings. It's accepted that the Gambia signed the application instituting proceedings in its own name. However, it's clear from the documents I took you to yesterday that these proceedings are brought on behalf of the OIC and that the proceedings are financed by an OIC-controlled fund. I will not take you to all that evidence again. The situation is expressed particularly clearly in the 24 November OIC press release at tab 3.17 of the judge's folder. It states in terms that the Gambia, as chair of the ad hoc OIC committee, has been tasked with submitting the case to the ICJ following a decision by the OIC heads of state. The meaning is plain. The decision to bring these proceedings was brought by the OIC heads of state and the OIC tasked the Gambia to bring them. The Gambia was so tasked in its capacity as chair of the ad hoc committee. The fact that the Gambia brings these proceedings on behalf of the OIC has been announced in official OIC documents, statements made by the Gambia in the General Assembly and by the law firm representing the Gambia in these proceedings as well as in the media. The Gambia may now claim otherwise, but this is a bare assertion that is contradicted by the evidence. It may well be that there is more to the background to the adoption of these OIC resolutions than Myanmar can know. If so, explanations and evidence could have been provided by the Gambia, which unlike Myanmar was a party to the various developments within the OIC relating to this matter. It has provided none and in the circumstances, the court can only base its decision on the evidence before it. I would finally note in this respect that the Gambia did not argue today that it would be legitimate for it to bring these proceedings on behalf of the OIC. The Gambia seems to concede that point. The second sub-issue of prima facie jurisdiction concerns the existence of a dispute. Mr. Darjean claimed this morning that the various OIC resolutions made clear to the Gambia that there was a dispute with Myanmar under the Genocide Convention. I do not need to repeat all that I said yesterday. They do not. Mr. Darjean referred this morning to the March 2019 OIC Resolution 4/46-MM on the situation of the Muslim community in Myanmar. However, that resolution also does not mention specifically the Genocide Convention. It contains general references to genocide as well as, for instance, crimes against humanity. But as I submitted yesterday, this court has no jurisdiction in this case over violations of customary international law aspects of genocide. The OIC resolution does not identify a dispute concerning the interpretation, application, or fulfillment of the Genocide Convention within the meaning of Article 9. I therefore maintain the position that the 11 October note verbal did not call for a response either at all or in any event within a month. Mr. President, members of the court, I then turn to the issue of standing. Counsel for the Gambia once again blurs the crucial difference between the right to invoke another state's responsibility and the question whether a state has standing before this court. This difference is important and as the general right to invoke another state's responsibility under customary international law is much broader, given that the question of standing before this court is clearly regulated by this court's statute and its established jurisprudence. Let me recall that the ILC's then-special rapporteur himself considered that what is now Article 48 of the ILC's draft articles on state responsibility was in many parts no codification of the Lex Lata but merely constituted a progressive development of international law. Secondly, the ILC has made it clear that Article 48 of the draft articles was without prejudice to the general principle that the implementation of state responsibility is in first place an entitlement of the injured state. Or as the ILC's former special rapporteur on the matter put it in unequivocal terms, the priority of specially affected states ought to be recognized when it comes to reactions to violations of ergo omnes norms. The progressive development provided for in Article 48, paragraph 2 of the ILC's Articles on State Responsibility was thus merely intended to ensure that where there is no state at all that is individually injured, some third entity is available to invoke the responsibility of the violating state in the interest of the beneficiaries of that obligation breached. However, in cases like the one before you now, in which there is a specifically affected state, namely Bangladesh, a finding which the applicant did not rebut this morning, it is that especially affected state that has the right to invoke the responsibility of the state that has allegedly breached its obligations. In such a situation, it is neither necessary nor indeed desirable that any other state should then be able to invoke such responsibility as well. Therefore, our submission is not that a non-injured state was generally barred in any conceivable situation from bringing a claim before this court. Rather, we submit that it's not possible to circumvent the principle that it's the right of an injured state to decide if and eventually how to invoke the responsibility of another state and that the right of non-injured states to invoke such responsibility is subsidiary. This is also highlighted by Article 45 of the ILC's Articles on State Responsibility. According to Article 5 of the ILC Articles on State Responsibility, no state may invoke state responsibility if the injured state has either waived its claim or acquiesced in the lapse of the claim. We submit that the same must hold true when the specially affected state has, by entering a reservation to Article 9 of the Genocide Convention, waived its right to vindicate the responsibility of the alleged wrongdoer before the court. Mr. President, that now brings me to the relevance of Myanmar's Article 8 reservation, which Professor Darjean, I feel, misunderstands. What he did accept is that Myanmar's reservation has a bearing on the ability to seize the court. And indeed, how could it be otherwise, given that the clear wording of Article 8, namely in French and Spanish, uses terms typically used in relation to court proceedings? And its drafting history shows various attempts to limit the scope of season to only some of the organs of the United Nations were rejected. So there's agreement between the parties on that point. Professor Darjean did claim, however, that Myanmar's interpretation is not bona fide. Yet, on the contrary, it's the Gambia's interpretation of Article 8 and Myanmar's reservation there too that's not in line with the accepted principles of treaty interpretation since it empties both Article 8 as well as the reservation to which the Gambia did not object of any relevance. As a matter of fact, contrary to what you heard this morning, Myanmar's argument based on its Article 8 reservation is not depriving Article 9 of any meaning. Rather, it's Myanmar's interpretation that brings Article 8 and Article 9 in line. Otherwise, the fact that Article 8 governs the season of the court, which we understand is now accepted by the Gambia, would be redundant and completely useless. As you will recall, Article 8 provides that any state, I repeat, any state, may seize the court once acts of genocide are in the process of being committed. It's thus Article 8, not Article 9, that might imply that any state party, even if not specially affected, might seize the court and thus allow for some kind of actio popularis. In other words, if there is any possibility of an actio popularis under the Genocide Convention, if, then that is the effect of Article 8 rather than of Article 9. This obvious effect of Article 8 has so far simply not been relevant, given that in all previous cases under the Genocide Convention, it was the specially affected state, be it Bosnia or Croatia, that had brought the case. What's even more is that none of the cases which the court has so far dealt with under the Genocide Convention involved a reservation to Article 8. Thus, the court has never had to pronounce upon the relevance of Article 8 for the season of the court. But in this case, where Myanmar has made a reservation to Article 8, the effect must be that the court cannot be seized of a case under the Genocide Convention by a non-injured, non-specially affected state in circumstances where the respondent state has an Article 8 reservation but has not made a reservation to Article 9. It's obvious that where a contracting party has neither a reservation to Article 8 nor to Article 9, the distinction between the season of the court, regulated by Article 8 and is accepted by the Gambia, and the court's jurisdiction governed by Article 9 is somewhat academic. But as I said yesterday, a valid season is a necessary precondition for the exercise of the court's jurisdiction. The effect of Myanmar's reservation to Article 8 is that this provision has to be read as providing that not any contracting party may seize the court with a dispute that it might have with Myanmar. Myanmar's reservation to Article 8 on that interpretation therefore has the legal effect of limiting the right to seize the court to those contracting parties that are specifically affected by the alleged violations of the Genocide Convention, provided at least that the court has jurisdiction under Article 9. Finding otherwise would not only render Article 8 completely redundant and obsolete but also, and more importantly, the reservation that Myanmar made to Article 8, a reservation that has been accepted by the Gambia. So to summarize, in contrast, for instance, to Article 33 of the European Convention on Human Rights, the Genocide Convention on this interpretation distinguishes between a broad power to seize the court, on the one hand, regulated by Article 8, and a more limited compromises clause in Article 9 on the other. And it's exactly this difference that explains the fact that Myanmar, while entering a reservation to Article 8 of the Genocide Convention, did not at the same time enter a reservation to Article 9. The effect of the reservation to Article 8 is to preclude the season of the court by any contracting party. That is to say, parties to the Genocide Convention that are not injured states. It thus has the effect to preclude any form of actio popularis by any not specifically affected contracting party to the Genocide Convention. On the other hand, it doesn't preclude the court from exercising jurisdiction provided that it was seized by an injured state and providing that the court has jurisdiction. Hence, Bangladesh, being the specially affected state, which is another qualification that the Gambia has not challenged during its pleadings, Bangladesh is not barred by the Article 8 reservation from seizing the court on this possible interpretation since Bangladesh, unlike the Gambia, is not just any state within the meaning of Article 8 of the convention. Had it not been for Bangladesh's own Article 9 reservation, the court would have had jurisdiction and it's that reservation to Article 9 which again did not appear in the submissions this morning. It's exactly the purpose of the reservation to Article 8 to preclude attempts to circumvent the limitations on the court's jurisdiction under Article 9. And I submit that it is not contrary to the principle of good faith to limit attempts to bring an actio popularis through the making of a reservation to Article 8, given that this court has upheld time and again that Article 9 reservations, which exclude the court's jurisdiction in toto, are permissible under the Genocide Convention. Let us also note that even Professor Sands, who is proud of the concept of actio popularis, accepts that a state may validly accept such a right to bring a case without being specially affected by an alleged treaty violation. So let us assume for a minute that Senegal had entered a reservation when exceeding to the United Nations Convention Against Torture to the effect that only injured states may bring a case before the court under Article 30 of that convention. Under those circumstances, any state would have been barred unless the state could claim to be specially affected by Senegal's violations of the Convention Against Torture. And it's exactly the same limited effect that Myanmar's Article 8 reservation has when it comes to the ability of states' parties to seize the court with a case under Article 9. Let me end by noting the repeated attempts of Professor Sands to frighten the court as to what might be the possible effects of a decision in this case denying provisional measures, stating that it might put the court in the wilderness for two decades. Apart from the fact that, as the saying goes, fear is a bad advisor, it's worth recalling that the court has not shied away from making findings that a state was either not responsible for genocide or that genocide had not happened in the first place, even where those findings were contrary to findings previously made by other actors including other organs of the United Nations. And we submit that this is the essential function of the court as the principal judicial rather than political organ of the United Nations. Moreover, the reference to your South West Africa judgment is also misplaced for other reasons. For one, in that case, the effect of the judgment was that no state whatsoever could bring a case against South Africa for the violations of the mandate. In contrast there too, in this case, specially affected states might bring a case against Myanmar provided there's a valid jurisdictional bond under Article 9. And beyond this, Myanmar also accepts that even where a specially affected state such as Bangladesh is not able to bring a case given its own Article 9 reservation, it might still take countermeasures against Myanmar provided Myanmar were to commit a violation of the Genocide Convention. Mr. President, finally, I turn to the wording of the provisional measures requested by the Gambia. Mr. Sands suggested this morning that the provisional measures concerning preservation of evidence and granting access to UN bodies is consistent with the jurisprudence of the court and that it builds on the frontier dispute case. But this was said without analysis. The comparison with that case is not apt. That case, as the court will recall, concerned a dispute between the Republic of Upper Volta, now Burkina Faso, and the Republic of Mali concerning part of their common frontier. Consistently with the court's jurisprudence in other cases concerning the use of force, the court addressed its order in identical terms to both parties: to refrain from action which might extend or aggravate the dispute or which might impede the gathering of evidence, to withdraw their forces behind lines to be agreed and to continue to observe the recently agreed ceasefire and in regard to administration of the disputed areas to refrain from modifying the situation which had prevailed before the armed actions giving rise to the conflict. There was nothing novel in the provisional measures ordered in the frontier dispute case. They were framed with care to ensure balance between the parties and to avoid prejudging the outcome of the case. Their object was to seek to preserve the rights of both parties. There's nothing in the order which paves the way for the use of the court's limited jurisdiction under Article 41 to impose on the parties new obligations under international law. Indeed, the court was at pains to emphasize in the frontier dispute case that the court is not empowered at the stage of provisional measures to modify the situation which prevailed before the armed action leading to the filing of the parties' requests. The court's powers are confined to safeguarding existing rights on each party, not imposing new obligations. The use of provisional measures to create new substantive obligations on member states goes beyond the power in Article 41 to preserve the respective rights of parties to a dispute and has no support in the jurisprudence of this court. As was noted by this court in its judgment in Le Grand, the power of the court under Article 41 to indicate provisional measures is based on the necessity when circumstances call for it to safeguard and avoid prejudice to the rights of the parties as determined by the final judgment of the court. This idea of preservation is probably the most essential element in the concept of provisional measures. It requires the court to look both at the risk of irremediable prejudice being caused to the applicant as well as the risk of causing irremediable prejudice to the respondent if it turns out that interim relief should not have been granted. Therefore, the court must carefully consider the consequences that might follow were it to indicate the measures sought. And it's therefore submitted that the court should be wary of indicating provisional measures in cases where there's a complex situation on the ground in relation to which various diplomatic and practical initiatives are in play without sufficient understanding of the effects that such provisional measures might have. For instance, whatever the reasons may be for the lack of significant repatriation so far, there is widespread support for the principle that repatriations should occur. It must be questioned what would be the effect on such support of a finding by this court that those returning to Myanmar would be at imminent risk of genocide? The provisional measures hearing by its nature is limited in scope and does not afford an opportunity for the court to weigh all the advantages and all the disadvantages of different courses of action. Where there is an urgent need for something specific to preserve the rights of a party, the appropriateness of a provisional measure focused on that specific matter may be obvious. However, the court is simply not in a position to make such assessments in relation to measures expressed in broad and general terms, the precise implications of which in practice... the precise implications of which in practice cannot be known. I elaborated yesterday on the problems of the provisional measures proposed by the Gambia in this case. Mr. President, members of the court, that concludes my observations. I would now invite you to call on Professor Shabas.
I thank Mr. Staker for his statement. And I shall now give the floor to Professor Shabas. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, for giving me the floor again in these proceedings on provisional measures. Mr. President, Your Excellencies, there have been many references to the fact-finding mission set up by the Human Rights Council. Indeed, the case set before you by the Gambia relies essentially entirely on that report, on the reports of the fact-finding mission. For this reason, this morning, the Gambia sought to defend the criticisms that were made and the observations about the quality of the report of the fact-finding mission. Yesterday, I criticized the fact-finding mission, amongst other things, for the allegation in the report recently issued in 2019 that genocidal intent had strengthened. And you may recall, on Tuesday's hearing, Council for the Gambia laid considerable emphasis on this observation as a way of bolstering the argument favoring provisional measures. This morning, it was suggested that I had actually not studied the report adequately and that I had missed some important paragraphs and relevant portions. I would not want the court to think that I made such a statement here without thoroughly reviewing the fact-finding mission report. I've studied that report, the recent one is more than, is about 200 pages long, as well as the longer one from the previous year, more than 400 pages in length. I've read every paragraph. Mr. Reichler referred to paragraph nine, where the fact-finding mission set out its summary explanation for why it thought genocidal intent was strengthening in 2019 compared to 2018. Members of the court may already have noticed that when he actually recited the reasons, the word continuation appeared more than once. Paragraph nine speaks of, and I quote, "continued denial of their citizenship and ethnic identity, the living conditions to which it subjects them, its failure to reform laws that subjugate the Rohingya people, the continuation of hate speech directed at the Rohingya, its prior commission of genocide, and its disregard for accountability." We find all of these points in the 2018 report. There's nothing new. They are the same allegations. The indicators that were pointed to in the 2018 report are the same that are repeated in the 2019 report. If anything, the 2018 report, with its description of the conflict in 2017, of the deaths, of the abuses, of the, all of those allegations, is much worse in the 2018 report than in the 2019 report. This explains my conclusion that it was only the opinion of the fact-finding mission to use the label genocide and to affirm that there was genocidal intent that strengthened. And my suggestion to the court is that it not take into account the claim in the report of 2019 that the genocidal intent that it reports to identify has strengthened. Mr. President, members of the court, this morning we were shown slides relating to the position of the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees. There were two slides that were shown, by my recollection. And the implication seemed to be that Myanmar had presented the court with a partial picture or that perhaps it even attempted to mislead the court. Some of you may have noticed, if you've studied the slides, that the references were to documents from the UN High Commission for Refugees from 2018, one of them quite early in the year 2018, indeed, almost two years ago. Whereas the document that Myanmar referred to yesterday was more recent, it was dated November 2019, one month ago. And it clearly indicated that the reality on the ground is fluid and that there is ongoing and meaningful engagement between the parties attempting to deal with a difficult situation. In fact, the UNDP, United Nations Development Programme, and the United Nations High Commissioner for Refugees in the most recent report of November 2019 outline the main challenges facing communities in Rakhine State and the need to address these in order to repatriate those who are displaced. The report indicated three short-term next steps that the parties need to undertake. And the UN High Commissioner for Refugees expressed continued commitment to assess the needs of those who are displaced and how they might be met by the government of Myanmar. This morning, Council for the Gambia produced a news clipping indicating a deployment of troops before the events of late August 2017, the implication being that the army's operations on 25 August 2019 and the subsequent days had been planned well in advance. But whatever the time of deployment, the fact remains that there were more than 30 attacks launched simultaneously on the 25th of August 2017. And these were obviously not planned by the authorities of Myanmar. Let me also remind the court that the internal armed conflict started with the earlier ARSA attacks in October of 2016, 10 months before the deployment that was referred to in the newspaper clipping shown to you this morning. It should go without saying that there would have been several deployments and rotations of personnel during this period. There is nothing sinister about this. If anything, the presentation of such a news clipping shows the risks associated with a selective approach to the facts in Rakhine State. Council for the applicant made many comments this morning about what was labeled, the failure of Myanmar to deny certain allegations of a factual nature. But we were told this is not a proceeding on the merits. And we have been warned not to engage in such a debate by Practice Direction 11. Yesterday, I quite clearly said that with reference to the case law of the court, establishing that one or more of the punishable acts listed in Article Two of the Genocide Convention had never been a problem to litigants. And for that reason, I made it clear that I would therefore not concern myself with this dimension of the case, but rather direct my attention to the part that the Gambia had virtually ignored in its submissions and what is really the essence of this case, which is the mental element. This morning, the applicant went through, rather methodically, a list of indicators that was considered by the fact-finding mission in reaching its conclusion about genocidal intent. This list appears to be derived from a detailed matrix which has been prepared by the UN Office on Genocide Prevention, presided over by the Special Advisor on the Prevention of Genocide. The relevant document was entitled "Framework of Analysis for Atrocity Crimes: A Tool for Prevention", and it's referred to in several paragraphs of the 2019 report. This confirms, by the way, that the list of indicators developed by the Office on Genocide Prevention was in fact inspired by this matrix of factors, the framework of analysis adopted in New York by the Office on Genocide Prevention. I checked my records yesterday evening to confirm that I had personally assisted in the preparation of this document, the Framework of Analysis, joining the two special advisors and the professionals at sessions where these were discussed and developed. I've always been intrigued by the list. People engaged in the field of genocide have struggled for many years to see if a formula, some sort of framework, could be developed that would identify the potential, the warning signs of genocide. It's always a problem because the lists that are prepared, the attempts of preparing a list, inevitably consist of long recitals of human rights violations that indeed may be present, and in fact are inevitably present, if a genocide takes place. But that are also present in so many other environments and so many other contexts where genocide has not taken place, is not taking place, and is highly, highly unlikely to take place. These lists of indicators are very long. There are many countries represented in this room. I dare say that virtually every country where people in this room come from will tick several of the boxes on those lists of indicators of genocidal risk factors. One need only to confirm this, read the reports of the treaty bodies of the United Nations and the reports under the universal periodic review submitted to the Human Rights Council. The special advisor uses the list to identify situations. I mentioned yesterday, and it was not challenged, contested, or explained by the Council for the applicant this morning, that the special advisor has not referred to Myanmar for 15 months and in that same time has issued declarations on several other situations in the world that are very far from being situations where there is a serious risk of genocide. We could return to the discussion in the report that was referred to by Mr. Reichler in his submission this morning. The indicators that were cited begin with extreme brutality. We can well imagine how many countries will generate evidence of extreme brutality. The second was the organized nature of the activities or of the acts. Again, this is present in many, many situations. The third is sexual violence, a phenomenon that regrettably occurs in many parts of the world and that we all condemn unequivocally. The fourth, hate speech. But let me linger on that point for a few minutes. Mr. President, members of the court, hate speech is a phenomenon that's not reserved in Myanmar. Not only do we have hate speech in many parts of the world, in many countries, but debates rage about how robust should be the legal intervention to address it. And some countries insist that it may even fall within the protected domain of freedom of expression. As an example, Council referred to a Facebook page from 2017. We did not debate this on Tuesday and Wednesday, although it was a significant feature in the Fact-Finding Mission's report of 2018 and might well have been an object of some discussion in the earlier, in the first phase of the proceedings. The Fact-Finding Mission each year has issued a short report as well as a long report. I've referred to the long reports, consisting of hundreds of pages. But there's a much shorter report issued each year of about 20 pages. And the reason for the long report, as I'm sure many members of the court are aware, is to circumvent the rule within the United Nations on the length of reports. So the short report is the official document, the one that is formally presented to the Human Rights Council. The short report in 2018 had a very summary discussion of genocide, to which I referred the court in my presentation yesterday. I had drawn the court's, attempted to draw the court's attention to the relevant paragraphs because of the hesitant way in which the commission, the mission, referred to genocide. In its paragraphs dealing with war crimes and crimes against humanity, it was quite unequivocal and said war crimes and crimes against humanity had been committed. Whereas when it turned to genocide, it was less certain, less definitive, saying that this was something to be determined by a court. In its explanation for genocidal intent, and this is where we return to the hate speech issue, it referred to only one fact, which was a reference to the Tatmadaw Commander, the military commander-in-chief, to clearance operations. And it cited this famous Facebook post in discussing the inferences of intent at paragraph 86 of the 2018 report. It recalled, and I quote, "the statement made by the Tatmadaw Commander-in-Chief that the clearance operation is not a reference to ARSA but to the, quote, 'unfinished job,' unquote, of solving the, quote, 'long-standing Bengali problem.'" The paragraph then has a reference, right in the text, to paragraph 35, except when one turns to paragraph 35, it doesn't quite say the same thing. It refers to the Facebook post of September 2018, said to be at the height of operations of the operations. This must be a typographical mistake because the height of the operations was 2017, not 2018. And then the Facebook quote says the following, according to paragraph 35. "The Bengali problem is a longstanding one which has become an unfinished job despite the efforts of the previous government to solve it. The government in office is taking great care in solving the problem." This is the damning evidence of genocidal intent, allegedly. There is no reference here to clearance operations, despite what was said later in the report and the suggestion that this reference in the Facebook post was to clearance operations. And, just to be clear, there's no confusion about this. The text that I've just cited, the one that doesn't refer to clearance operations in paragraph 35 of the short report for 2018, appears, again with no change, in paragraph 753 of the long report that accompanies the short report. Again, there is no reference to clearance operations. All I can say is that the Fact-Finding Mission wasn't very careful in its reference to the Facebook post, despite the fact that this allegation seemed to it to be crucial, central to its claim of genocidal intent. Be that as it may, the statement on the Facebook post is one to which many different meanings can be attached. It certainly couldn't be described as hate speech. Not the sort of thing that we hear about circulating on Facebook and other social media in many parts of the world. May I remind the court that in the past, it has also been presented with allegations of hate speech or of genocide incitement made to support charges that the Genocide Convention has been breached. In the Croatia versus Serbia case, Council for the Respondent, dealing with the counterclaim by Serbia, referred to the famous, the notorious Brioni Conference, during which the president of Croatia had made statements that left open a possible interpretation that they were genocidal in nature. And this court dismissed the argument, recognizing it under the circumstances and taking into account the context, it was unreasonable to draw such a conclusion. And I would submit that the same should be the case with regard to the Facebook post, presented this morning as an example of hate speech and in the report of the Fact-Finding Mission as evidence of genocidal intent. There are no doubt many examples of hate speech circulating on social media within Myanmar. Council for the applicant referred to this in the Tuesday session, but left, in my view, the impression that was not sufficiently clear for the court that these were examples from private individuals. This was not government hate speech. These were individuals sending tweet messages and so on on social media. And again, this is a phenomenon that is not reserved to Myanmar, of private individuals indulging in forms of hate speech through social media and on the internet. And I am sure that some of it goes on in the very city in which we sit today. Myanmar is not an exception to this, but nor does it. Does evidence of such speech make any meaningful contribution to the thesis that the state harbors a genocidal intent? Let me continue with the remainder of the list of indicators that were provided. The fifth of them is discriminatory policies about citizenship and residency. This is clearly an important grievance of the refugee population. This is clearly an important grievance of the refugee population who have made grants of citizenship a condition for their return and apparently have refused to return until the matter is addressed in a satisfactory manner. But again, the existence of discriminatory plans and policies dealing with citizenship and mobility and entry to the country is hardly the monopoly of Myanmar in our modern world. The sixth indicator, it's really related to the hate speech issue, is the tolerance of public rhetoric of hate speech. Again, examples in other countries come to mind. And finally, the failure to prosecute. You have the explanation as to the difficulty of prosecution, but this too is a problem that we confront in many parts of the world. I should point out that Article VI of the Genocide Convention specifically contemplates the form of accountability that counsel for the Gambia this morning dismissed. Article, Article VI of the Convention states, "Persons charged with genocide or any of the other acts enumerated in Article III shall be tried by a competent tribunal of the state in the territory of which the act was committed or by such international penal tribunal as may have jurisdiction with respect to those contracting parties which shall have accepted its jurisdiction." And we know the answer to that criterion, which is not fulfilled in this case. It's clear that the Convention creates a strong presumption that it's in fact the state where the crimes took place, where the crimes should be prosecuted. That's the state that bears the responsibility. Some new documents were put into the judge's folder today and were suggested to have some relevance to the proceedings. The first, a press release from the U.S. Department of the Treasury that lists some military leaders in Myanmar, as well as individuals in other countries. I'm not quite sure from the remarks of counsel for the Gambia what exactly this was intended to prove, because I didn't find any references to genocide in the document. I'm struck by the fact that this was all presented in the context of a discussion of accountability and it was related somehow to the manner in which a pardon had been given to those convicted with regard to summary execution. Of course, this issue was addressed very directly by the agent for Myanmar in yesterday's hearing, and you will recall that she expressed the fact that many in Myanmar were dismayed by the pardon. The reference by Mr. Reichler to the U.S. Treasury is a moral authority for the denunciation of Myanmar, and then the reference to pardoning perpetrators has a whiff of hypocrisy because we have examples from other countries, including his own, of governments pardoning perpetrators. "Let he use without sin cast a first stone." Counsel for the applicant then turned to these appalling images of a group of men being summarily executed. This, this was sensationalist and quite gratuitous. It's difficult to understand what point the Gambia was attempting to make or why those photographs were submitted. Yesterday, the agent for Myanmar spoke of how the perpetrators of this summary execution had been brought to justice and convicted of crimes. What exactly was the point in dispute? Why did you and the people in the courtroom have to see those pictures? Let me say a word about the issue of the mass graves, because I was the one who raised the point in yesterday's proceedings. I made it in the context of discussing the total number of deaths in the recent period. And I noted, and this is in the transcript, page 37, paragraph 48, and I quote, "The Fact Finding Mission, moreover, provides numerous aerial photographs, yet nowhere does it point to any evidence of mass graves." In his remarks this morning, Mr. Reichler translated this sentence into the suggestion that I said there are no mass graves. As you can see, I never said there were no mass graves. I said there's no mention of them by the Fact Finding Mission with regard to the aerial So we were pointed today to a news report from AP that apparently located five mass graves, although the news report does not clarify exactly where they were or how many bodies we're talking about. But that being said, why did the Fact Finding Mission not refer to the mass graves with reference to the AP story? Why is this not mentioned in the report of the Fact Finding Mission? Yesterday, I said that this was the first application of the Genocide Convention where an estimate of the total number of victims was not provided by the applicant. The silence of the applicant in the oral proceedings continued into the second round. You may recall that yesterday I anticipated that my colleagues from the Gambia would answer that it's not a numbers game. And indeed, that point was made by Mr. Sands. But beyond that, the only contribution to the discussion was the remark that there are ample authorities that an attack on a relatively small number can be sustained as genocide. The example, it wasn't given this morning, but it's in the footnote of the transcript which we received a little over an hour ago, is to the Srebrenica massacre. The reference is in the Karajic decision and in the judgment of this court. That's all. There are no other authorities. I don't believe they exist. Recently, the prosecutor of the International Criminal Tribunal for the former Yugoslavia attempted, as he has done on other occasions, to invoke the Srebrenica precedent in order to charge the crime of genocide with respect to much lower levels of killing than at Srebrenica, levels of killing similar to the ones that were mentioned on Tuesday, drawn from the report of the Fact Finding Missions, and the judges have consistently refused to follow A final point, and this is a bit awkward, personally painful for me, is the reference to an interview that I did with Al Jazeera several years ago. I suppose I should be flattered that counsel for the applicant thinks my views are so authoritative, although I suspect the intent was more to embarrass myself or my client. I did a, as I recall, a one-hour interview with a journalist from Al Jazeera. Two clips of a matter of seconds were taken from the interview. The journalist persistently tried to get me to apply the word genocide to the situation in Myanmar at the time. I believe it was done in late 2012 or perhaps the beginning of 2013, and I just as consistently refused, because I've never said that Myanmar, that genocide was taking place in Myanmar. I have never said that. The journalist then posed a hypothetical question, saying that if certain things were established, would it be frivolous to use the word? And it's to that that I answered no. My views will be a lot clearer if we could get a copy of the tape of the entire interview, but it's hardly important, really. The issue before this court is not what I or anyone else may have said or thought about genocide. It's about the facts, about the international law and the interpretation that this court gives to the Genocide Convention. Mr. President, members of the court, may I now turn to the issue of the content of the provisional measures with reference, as has been made by counsel on several occasions, to the 1993 orders of the court. The first in April 1993 and then the second in September 1993, which really just confirmed the order in, of April 1993. These orders, of course, ultimately led to findings of the court in the 2007 judgment. I think it's important in understanding the weight that should be given to the orders of 1993, the way in which we understand them, to appreciate the context in terms of the legal development of the, of the crime of genocide. Because in 1993, when those orders were issued, there was really no case law on the subject of genocide. There was the advisory opinion of 1951, of course, which was concerned primarily with the issue of reservations and of entry into force of the Convention and not with the interpretation of Article II, which is really at the core of the issues before the court here. I think in 1993, it was unclear as to whether the court would adopt a broad interpretation of the scope of Article II of the Convention, as many had urged over the years, or a narrow one. That only became clear many years later. Moreover, and I've taken the time, as I'm sure some of you have in recent days, to review the debates, the proceedings, the oral hearings and the issuance of the orders in 1993, to see just how summary they were, how quickly the proceedings took place, how the issue of whether summary, whether provisional measures order should be proposed or not was not really contested because both sides asked for it, both sides. So there was nobody there arguing that maybe it wasn't appropriate and raising some of the concerns in such circumstances to which Mr. Sake referred only a few minutes ago. And it was certainly not unreasonable in 1993 for the court to issue an order based on a relatively low threshold, given the uncertainty, the, the unknown about how the issue of genocide would be dealt with on the merits and the novelty of a situation that was underway in April of 1993 in the former Yugoslavia. I beg the court to indulge me, just a little deviation into the history of the Convention and the notion of genocide in order to illustrate this point. Yesterday, I had wanted to mention an anniversary, as counsel did on the 10th of December, mentioning that it was Human Rights Day. Yesterday, the 11th of December was the 73rd anniversary of the Genocide Resolution of 1946 that ultimately led to the adoption of the Convention itself. I was concerned yesterday that I'd run out of time. I'm not so worried about that today. To understand why the definition of genocide is narrow, I'm not talking about the interpretation, I'm talking just about the text, we need to go back 75 years to the London Conference when the concept of crimes against humanity was codified for the purpose of prosecution in the Nuremberg Tribunal. Much of it, much has been written about this, including a wonderful book by someone who's here in the courtroom, Philippe Sands' book, East West Street, explaining the major contribution of the Nuremberg Tribunal to the progressive development of international law. When he reported back to President Truman, the prosecutor, Robert Jackson, who was also a justice of the U.S. Supreme Court, said, and I quote, "The most significant result of applying these concepts are to outlaw aggression and to condemn the notion of persecution of minorities clearing the path to war." Note that Robert Jackson refers not to the prosecution, to the persecution, I'm sorry, the persecution of minorities as such, but to the more limited purpose of clearing the road to war. And to understand what he meant, we have to consult the transcript of the London Conference. There, discussing the scope of the crime, of crimes against humanity, Jackson said, and I quote, "Ordinarily, we do not consider that acts of a government towards its citizens warrant our interference. We have some regrettable circumstances in our own country in which minorities are unfairly treated. We think it's justifiable that we interfere or attempt to bring retribution only because the concentration camps were in pursuit of a common plan or enterprise of making unjust or illegal war in which we became involved." Raphael Lemkin, about whom we've spoken on previous days, the man who coined the term genocide, was in Nuremberg when the judgment of the International Military Tribunal was issued, and he was very disturbed by the limitation on crimes against humanity. There is an account from a former prosecutor, I'm sure some of you had occasion to meet him over the years, the late Henry King, describing the encounter with Lemkin in the lobby of the Grand Hotel the day after the judgment was issued. He said, and I quote, "Lemkin was very upset. He was concerned that the decision of the IMT, the Nuremberg Court, did not go far enough in dealing with genocidal actions. This was because the IMT limited its judgment to wartime genocide and did not include peacetime genocide." And Lemkin rushed back to New York and lobbied at the UN General Assembly convincing three representatives of member states, India, Cuba and Panama, to propose a resolution recognizing genocide as a crime under international law that can be committed in peacetime as well as in time of war. In November 1946, the resolution was proposed by the Cuban ambassador, Ernesto de Higo, and he said in his speech in the Sixth Committee of the General Assembly that, quote, "At the Nuremberg trial, it was not possible to prosecute genocide committed in peacetime because it was committed before the war." And he said, "Fearing that such a crime may remain unpunished, owing to the principle nullum crimincine lega, the representative of Cuba asks that genocide be declared a crime under international law." And so there were two resolutions adopted 73 years ago. Resolution 95, confirming the principles that were established in the Charter of the Tribunal and in the judgment, and Resolution 96 on the subject of genocide, the crime of genocide. It was to fill, Resolution Number 96, as the Cuban ambassador explained, was to fill a gap in Resolution 95, the gap of crimes against humanity, but the gap was only partially filled in 1948 with the adoption of the Convention. The Convention made clear that it was applicable to peacetime as well as wartime, in effect answering Lemkin's concern, but the Convention does not codify a broad protection of minorities from persecution. It only protects minorities from destruction. The price to pay for agreement on a convention, the convention that the court is now seized with, was a narrow definition of genocide, confined not to the persecution of minorities but only to their physical destruction, and this has been confirmed in the case law of this court. In the 1990s, international criminal law went through a period of rapid development. Among the evidence that marked this new period was the application filed before this court and the issuance of the provisional measures orders of March 1993 and, or of April 93 and of September 93, the establishment of the Yugoslavia Tribunal in May of 1993, and the conclusion of the work of the International Law Commission on a draft statute for a permanent court under the leadership of its special rapporteur, Professor Crawford, as he then was. Subsequently, there was a dramatic expansion both as to the institutional mechanisms for prosecution and the substantive content of the law. War crimes were extended to non-international armed conflict and crimes against humanity were extended to apply in time of peace as well as in war. This progressive development of the law was entrenched in Articles Seven and Eight of the Rome Statute. It may seem somewhat paradoxical that in such a period of dynamism and development, the definition of genocide in Article VI, which is essentially identical to Article II of the Convention, did not undergo the same evolution. But at the Rome Conference, there was no interest in amending the definition of genocide, despite decades of criticism of its narrowness and limited scope. This was actually easy to understand. With the expansion of crimes against humanity to peacetime, the very issue that had prompted Lemkin's initiative at the first session of the General Assembly, there was little if any reason to enlarge the definition of genocide. There was no longer a gap to be filled. And nevertheless, efforts have been continued by those hoping that the definition of genocide will be broadened to encompass a broader range of acts and to accompany this, an understanding of genocidal intent that goes beyond physical destruction and extends to acts of persecution. Twice in this court in recent years, in the Bosnian and the Croatia cases, counsel have urged such an expansion and twice they have failed. The Gambia's application and the submission made this week reminds me of the words of an American baseball player known for his pithy an American baseball player known for his pithy aphorisms, who once said, "This is a case of déjà vu all over again." Why do I insist on this historical perspective? Because at the heart of the debate is whether the court should maintain its position solidly rooted in its jurisprudence to borrow its own expression or take a new direction. And while this debate will feature, if the case ever goes to the merits, it is also extraordinarily relevant to the debate on provisional measures. As I said, these issues were not debated at the provisional measure stage in 1993. As I said, both parties requested them. Yugoslavia's response to Bosnia's application that they wanted provisional measures too against the Bosniaks. And this is why those orders are of very limited relevance and assistance in addressing the issues today, some 26 years later. The fact that issues relating to atrocities perpetrated against minorities committed in peacetime would be addressed by an expansion of the definition of crimes against humanity could not have been known to the court in 1993 or to the parties. Today, we have a situation lamented by counsel for the applicant, we heard more of that this morning, and lamented, as was lamented by counsel for the applicants in the Croatian and the Bosnia cases, where there is a demanding standard for proof of genocidal intent. I won't repeat my remarks on this yesterday. But it's clear that today, the court imposes such a demanding standard, whereas that was not clear by any means in 1993. It does not seem to be sound judicial policy in 2019 that there should be a low standard for an order of provisional measures if the applicant confronts a very high and demanding standard on the merits. The criteria for the indication of provisional measures should correspond in some way to the criteria for success on the merits. I'm not here speaking about the prima facie issue, but rather about the plausibility issue. A plausibility issue at the provisional measure stage must bear a relationship to the likelihood of success on the merits. This is the point. It's clear that on this issue, there's a serious difference in the position of the Gambia and of Myanmar that the court will need to address in its decision. But again, at the risk of repeating myself, there is a problem with a legal mechanism whereby the standard for provisional measures is very low and is out of all proportion to any likelihood of success on the merits. Counsel for the applicant tried to contend that genocidal intent may coexist with other intents, and he made reference to the court's case law. But the court's case law was not addressing the coexistence of genocidal intent with other intents. It was saying that acts characterized as ethnic cleansing might also be considered genocidal if there was genocidal intent. I think this is quite different from the point counsel was making, and I don't believe that in conflict in any way with what the court said about drawing inferences from patterns of conduct. The hours late, I'm not going to read the citations. I apologize to the court for some of the hasty preparation. We had three hours between the morning session to get our text together. The relevant paragraphs, they were cited this morning. Paragraph 190 in the Bosnia decision, paragraph 163 in the Croatia decision. The Croatia decision, commenting on the earlier ruling in the Bosnia decision and endorsing it, says that "The court has no reason to depart from its previous conclusions. In order to determine whether forced displacements constitute genocide, it will seek to ascertain whether those forced displacements took place in such circumstances that they were calculated to bring about the physical destruction of the group." Many features of the circumstances alleged in the application, including the relatively small number of deaths compared with the overall population, the huge migration flows, the presence within Myanmar of many hundreds of thousands who have not been subject to violent attacks with lethal consequences or other threats to life since the events of September 2017, argue against the inference that such forced displacements took place in such circumstances that they were calculated to bring about the physical destruction of the group. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the court, for your attention. Mr. President, may I respectfully ask if you would give the floor to Her Excellency, the agent for Myanmar?
I thank Professor Shabazz for his statement. I shall now give the floor to the agent of Myanmar, Her Excellency Mrs. Ang San Suji, to make a closing statement on behalf of Myanmar. You have the floor, madam.
Mr. President and members of the court, it is not disputed that Myanmar, like the United Kingdom or the United States, has a military justice system. The Constitution of Myanmar cannot and should not be ignored if we are serious about establishing constitutional democracy and rule of law in Myanmar. International criminal tribunals take four to eight years to undertake investigations of core international crimes, sometimes longer. Just over two years have passed since the serious internal armed conflict against the ARSA, and the Second Court martial is now underway. The Gambia has not challenged the quality of the military justice in the Indian case, only the pardon, which many of us regret. The ongoing Gutabian court martial in Budiram Township should be allowed to run its course. I am confident that there will be further courts martial after the submission of the final report of the Independent Commission of Inquiry in a few weeks. Mr. President, it is vital for Myanmar's present and future that our civilian and military criminal justice systems functions in accordance with the Constitution. Where a country has a military justice system, neutralizing this system by externalizing justice, in effect surgically removes a critical limb from the body, the limb that helps armed forces to self-correct, to improve, to better perform their functions within the constitutional order. Mr. President, members of the court, in my opening statement yesterday, I mentioned that international justice is a practice that affirms our common values and that we look to justice as a champion of reconciliation and harmony that will assure the security and rights of all peoples. Allow me, in this context, to mention one example of what we are doing on the ground in Northern Rakhine to further reconciliation between communities. In January 2019, the IN Transformation Initiative, ITI, directed by Mr. Rolfe Mayer, a transitional justice leader in South Africa, launched the Rakhine Transformation Project that aims at preventing the recurrence of historical violence and paving the way for sustainable voluntary return of peoples displaced by violence. In the words of Mr. Mayer himself, I quote, "Nine months after its inception, and despite increased fighting in the area between the AA and the military, the project has gained sufficient traction in Moundore for it to be regarded as sustainable." Mr. President, recalling the words about football in paragraph 18 of the opening statement of the agent of the Gambia, allow me to present these pictures from a football match. Organized by the ITI, a football tournament recently took place at the Myanmar Athletic Field in Moundore Town. Players and spectators are a mix from different communities in Moundore Township, the area at the center of the 2016-2017 internal armed conflict in Rakhine. Adults and children, proud, enthusiastic, laughing, and most important of all, together. This is what we are striving to nurture in Rakhine, what we are endeavoring to foster throughout Myanmar, our country of great diversity, great potential, and great challenges. Mr. President, members of the court, I pray the decision you make with a wisdom and vision of justice will help us to create unity out of diversity, to develop the potential of our people, and to meet the challenges of a nation in quest of sustainable peace and development. Steps that generate suspicion, sow doubts, or create resentment between communities who have just begun to build a fragile foundation of trust could undermine reconciliation. Ending the ongoing internal armed conflict between the Arakan Army and Myanmar's defense services is of the utmost importance for our country. But it is equally important to avoid any reignition of the 2016-2017 internal armed conflict in Northern Rakhine. Mr. President, members of the court, I now conclude by formally presenting to you the final submission of Myanmar. These are as follows. In accordance with Article 60, paragraph 2 of the Rules of Court, for the reasons given during the hearing from 10th to 12th December 2019, and any other reasons the court might deem appropriate, Myanmar requests the court to remove the case from its list, in the alternative to reject the request for the indication of provisional measures submitted by the Gambia. Mr. President and members of the court, that concludes Myanmar's observations. I thank you for your kind attention, and I also thank the staff of the registry for all assistance offered to our delegation.
I thank the agent of Myanmar. The court takes note of the submissions of Myanmar, which you have just read, which you have just read out on behalf of your government. This spring is the present series of sitting is to an end. I would like to thank the agents, counsel, and advocates of the two parties for their statements. In accordance with the usual practice, I shall request both agents to remain at the court's disposal to provide any additional information the court may require. The court will render its order on the request for the indication of provisional measures as soon as possible. The agents of the parties will be advised in due course as to the date on which the court will deliver its order at a public sitting. Since the court has no other business before it today, the sitting is declared closed.